Good evening and welcome to the Oshkosh area school district board of education regular meeting for February 26, 2020. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Would you please call the roll?
Carolyn Evans.
Here.
Garner.
Here.
Hursaw.
Here.
Olmstead.
Here.
Heschel.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you very much. This evening we are very fortunate to have three students from Jefferson Elementary School who have come with a parent, each with a parent, to lead us in the pledge tonight. So we'll call forward Ellie Pomminter, Swara Foley, and Nicole Greisbach. Girls, we really appreciate your coming tonight and each bringing a driver with you so you don't have to drive your own vehicles. We always appreciate having students join us. So you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if you have other things to do, we certainly understand. So Ellie, oops, Ellie, thank you so much for coming. And Swara. There you are. And Nicole, I got one right anyway. There we go. All right, thank you so much for coming and we really appreciate your taking the time off to be with us tonight. And thanks to the parents for bringing them.
Yes.
And to Mrs. Buchanan, their principal, for coming with you as well. We always have a number of things to celebrate at our meetings, however, given the news that has come out of Milwaukee this afternoon, I think it's appropriate that we engage in a moment of silence for those who were killed and/or injured at the Molson Coors plant in Milwaukee today. As I noted, there are always a number of things to celebrate at our meetings and I just wanted to highlight a few of those. The phrase "too numerous to mention" comes to mind because there are many things that take place each and every day in our schools and I try to report on those that may be representative of many other things that are going on to celebrate, but I only report on those that I've been part of. Oshkosh North High School communities had a spaghetti dinner. I want to commend them and their families and friends who turned out to raise money for that international organization which helps children who are victims of war. And also commend the, anyone connected with the production of Les Mis, the Oshkosh North musical this year. There were many accolades on Facebook and throughout the community as a result of that, as there were for the West play of, or the musical rather, of Sister Act last month. Webster Stanley Elementary had a really exciting event called Read Your Heart Out in which they celebrated Black History Month by bringing in a variety of speakers who represented people from diverse cultures, as well as a drum circle and some other activities. Emmeline Cook, it is a great place to be and I continue to enjoy my time there as a volunteer reader with fourth grade students. Oaklawn School had a, had a great event scheduled for Walk to School, which was to be succeeded by a fire drill recently. However, the weather was too cold to walk outside, so we had to walk inside and that fire drill will be scheduled at another time. I want to commend and congratulate Representative Gordon Hints for recommending or nominating three of our Oshkosh West people for the Hometown Heroes Award. It was, it was an honor to join Dr. Cartwright and Mrs. Cole from Oshkosh West in celebrating those hometown heroes in the Wisconsin State Assembly last week. Those would be Dua Ahmad, the student who led a group of other students over to the mosque on December 3rd, Ken Levine, a math teacher whose first aid skills came into play that day, and Officer Mike Wissing for his and their heroic actions. Last night was the grades three through six orchestra concert at the Alberta Kimball Auditorium. They had a great turnout and I just want to commend the students and their families, as well as the teachers who had those students really well-prepared for that event. Mr. Nutini, Mrs. Osinga, and Mrs. Carloni. The Wisconsin Association of School Boards was established in the year 2020 and they kicked off their 100-year anniversary celebration last week with a reception in the Capitol Building in the Senate Parlor because the first meeting which resulted in the establishment of the Wisconsin Association of School Boards was first held there. That group represents all 421 public schools in the state of Wisconsin. I also attended the Wisconsin Association of School Boards Board Meeting. One of the things we talked about was state reading scores and I was able to share information as to what our district has been doing to move our district ahead in terms of student performance, particularly as it relates to phonics. We also discussed a strategic plan and equity goals. So our equity goals are in line with those of the state. So with that, I will conclude my report and turn it over to Dr. Cartwright.
Thank you very much, Dr. Harris. So today, we'll go ahead and get started right away. Each school year, the Wisconsin Athletic Directors Association provides each member high school with the ability to recognize individuals who have made a difference or a significant impact on the lives of student athletes or athletic programs. This year, our two high school athletic departments presented service awards to Glenn Patratz and Ross Kleinschmidt. On behalf of the entire district, we would like to sincerely thank Glenn and Ross for their many years of service to the Spartan and Wildcat athletic programs. Oshkosh North hosted the Fourth Annual Inclusive Valentine's Dance for our middle and high school students with intellectual disabilities. This event allowed students with disabilities to dance and interact with their peers in a safe and supporting setting. The dance also provided an experience that encourages healthy social relationships and guides members of the school community and beyond to a better understanding of students with unique learning needs. Many of our elementary schools recently had fun celebrating the 100th Day of School. Students and staff dressed up and recognized the 100th Day by wearing 100 items or by dressing up as a 100-year-old person. Webster Stanley Elementary School hosted its first annual Read Your Heart Out event in honor of Black History Month and National African-American Parent Involvement Day. During the event, students had the opportunity to explore a variety of activities, including a drum circle, art-based projects, storytelling, and so much more. Students in the Oshkosh North and West adaptive physical education classes, as well as their helpers, recently enjoyed a trip to Samburski Resort. The trip was part of their annual celebration of Accessibility Day. The students loved tubing, as well as the opportunity to access a fun winter activity. The South Park Panthers teamed up with the downtown Oshkosh Rotary for a Super Bowl Challenge, seeing who could donate the most soup cans to local shelters in Oshkosh. The school and Rotary were able to donate over 500 soup cans. Additionally, seventh graders at 7th South Park Middle School recently enjoyed a career exploration luncheon with Michael Rust, the current president of the Oshkosh Down Rotary. Student learned more about Mr. Rust's experience as an attorney, a mediator, and they were also able to ask him questions regarding his career. Carl Trager Middle School students and staff participated in a Red Out on Friday, February 14th, to support the American Heart Association and raise awareness for heart disease. Shapiro STEM Academy fourth graders had the opportunity to explore Flash Factory. Students drew and wrote examples of key words, which were then projected onto the BenQ board. The use of this platform was also a great way to review what text features students may wish to add to their informational writing piece. Some of our elementary schools have been enjoying friendly competition by hosting penny wars. Emmeline Cook Elementary School recently raised nearly $500 for the American Heart Association. And the winning class of second graders were able to tape Principal Rule to the wall during a Monday morning meeting. That must have been a sight to see. Additionally, Perry Tippler and ALP students recently participated in a penny war fundraiser to benefit congenital heart defect and Aba Strong charity. Almost $200 was raised for the charity and the eighth graders won the opportunity to enjoy popcorn and a movie in the cafeteria. This week, we are celebrating Public Schools Week, a national celebration to highlight the great things happening in our nation's public schools. We are so grateful for the many school professionals who work to help our students achieve their greatest potential every day, as well as the continued support of our families and our entire community. As superintendent, I continue to remain committed to being present and engaged in our schools and throughout the Oshkosh community. On the screen, you'll see just a few examples of where I've been spending my time for the last two weeks.
So with that, at this point in time, we do have some district administrator supplemental reports. We do have available to you a written report is the Achievement Gap Reduction Report, but unless you would like to have a verbal report on that, that's available in your packet. Otherwise, I would ask for Dr. Gunlock to come up in order to report out on our listening session from February the 12th.
Good evening. We had two groups that met with us during listening session. The first was a parent who was talking with us about teachers grading academic standards for things such as late work and behavior. We explained that this is, this is not the process that we use and we use typically things like life and career skills for situations where students might not be completing work on time. In a standards-based grading or standards-reference grading model that we use here in Oshkosh and many districts use, academic standards are graded for academic things and not necessarily for other things. So we explained that and we talked at length about that. The second group represented fill the gap and they came to talk to us about youth apprenticeship opportunities and how we could expand those opportunities. We had, we had a chance to explain to them that we have a significant number of youth apprenticeship opportunities in the school district already and we're always looking to grow those. We even talked about the fact that we offer two youth apprentice opportunities in our IT program. And I had mentioned that actually one of our current IT staff was hired by us through that opportunity, so it's something that Oshkosh uses very, very well. So those were the two different situations that were brought to us at listening session.
Thank you, Dr. Gunlock.
You're welcome.
I know that we do have some reports from board committee chairs. I know that Mrs. Olmstead is eager to report tonight.
Our Facility and Finance Committee met on Thursday, February 20th and it was, nothing from the agenda-related public forum came in, but what we did talk about with the agenda was, so we had a written report from Mrs. Schnorr for the Budget Variance Report. There were no questions about that report. The next thing we talked about was the health insurance option for retirees over 65. Mrs. Schnorr informed the committee that the district's previous healthcare carrier, GHT, allowed retirees to remain on the district's health insurance as a supplement to their Medicare coverage, but the retirees were billed directly by GHT. When we changed to Anthem last year, only seven of the retirees decided to elect this coverage as a supplement to Medicare. So as of, there was only seven of them. So as of December 31st of 2020, the supplement coverage through the district will no longer be available to the retirees. Therefore, the district will be sending letters of termination of coverage informing retirees and providing ample time for them to locate a new carrier for their supplemental insurance for January 1st of 2021, the new year. The Breitenveld Group is an insurance broker that works with the retirees to help them find the best health insurance, supplement coverage that will meet their needs. Information about the Breitenveld Group will be included in the termination of coverage letters as a resource for any of the retirees who might be interested in the assistance. We went into length with Mrs. Schnorr about this and made sure that our retirees, those seven, would have enough time, one-on-one time with this group and that she would watch it and she recommended that we use them and stick with them, that they'll, they really know what they're doing and they'll be able to help them get the best coverage and give them different options and help them work through it and get into their supplemental reports, too. Then we also went through the financial audit, which I know all of you guys got a copy that, if you weren't at the meeting. And we went through it with Dave and they changed, it's, if you guys see it, it's not Schenk anymore. They redid who we always use. They are now Clifton, Larson, and Allen, CLA. It's the, it's the same company, but just a new name, they merged. Dave reported that the results of the district's audit to the committee, he stated that the audit went very well and from a compliance perspective, the district has good control over the funds and there were absolutely no concerns. Our future meeting, the committee discussed canceling the March 19, 2020 meeting. That was something Allison, you want to talk to Mrs. Schnorr about. Unless the agenda items surfaced prior to that date, Mrs. Schnorr would communicate with the, with Allison Gardner, the committee's chair, to obtain her approval on canceling the meeting. The group should watch for future communication on the status of the meeting then. If there's anything, right now it's canceled. If there's anything that pops up, you guys can handle it.
Thank you.
All right. That's it.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Olmstead. Are there other board committee reports this evening?
Yes, there is. The Legislative Committee met just yesterday, yesterday morning. And the first thing that we did is, as the legislative session comes to a close, there's always a rush on to pass bills and that's what happened in assembly, so we just kind of ran down, make sense of list of bills that they passed. And then they are through meeting until January unless there's a special session called and the Senate has, I believe, one more day that they're meeting. Then they'll be done for the, for the year. Then we discussed the state budget surplus. As you probably heard, they came, they found about $800 million of revenue that is available and by law, half that goes into the rainy day fund and the other half is what the current discussions are ongoing to do with that. Assembly and the Senate sent Governor Evers a bill that would put that mostly towards property tax release and just today, Governor Evers vetoed that bill. So if nothing happens, that money will just be added on to the next year's budget as a surplus and it looks like that's probably what's going to happen. The committee discussed the possibility of creating a resolution or sending a letter to, from the, from our board in support of the governor's original proposal for the surplus of funds. And we're going to be discussing that, that's in the works now. We'll probably be discussing that at a workshop at our next board meeting on the 4th. Our next meeting date is still being discussed and we've come up with a final date, we will let you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Is there anyone else who has a board committee report tonight? All right, seeing none, we will move on then to non-agenda-related public forum. There was no one who signed up for that this evening, so we will move on to agenda-related public forum. There are three individuals who have signed up to speak this evening. There are some guidelines that we use for the public forum and I'll just share those at this time. We ask that you clearly state your name and address and the topic that you wish to address. If you are acting as a spokesperson for a particular group of individuals, please indicate the group that you represent. Please state clearly and concisely the matter of concern. Please limit your comments to the time allotted, which is three minutes. Three minutes. Remember that the use of specific names of district personnel could lead to legal liability. In such instances, please pursue the district's formal complaint process by contacting the superintendent's office at 424-0160 to direct you to the appropriate administrator. So with that, we will begin with the first person who signed up, who is Lindsay Erickson.
Thank you. My name is Lindsay Erickson. I'm a community health strategist at the Winnebago County Health Department and our address is 112 Otter Avenue in Oshkosh. So I'm here to talk about the city bus transportation issue on the agenda and we care about this issue in public health because providing youth access to public transportation is a public health strategy that leads to healthier communities. So a major factor that affects people's health is the ability to get to where they need to go in the community, whether that's after-school jobs to school, other services in the community like the Boys and Girls Club, the library. So by providing access to public transportation, we can ensure that students are able to engage in extracurricular activities, help fill jobs in the community, and relieve some of the burden that families might have in buying bus passes. With easier transportation options, we can also make sure that students are able to access critical services. So I thank you for all the work that the school district has done by offering mental health services for students, especially through the RISE UP program. And for some students, that access to mental health might be the only way at school. Going to school is the only way that they access that kind of service, that kind of screening. So if we can make it a little bit easier for students to get to school and be able to access those services, that can be huge for families. And providing free transit to students can also keep our roadway safer and including less congestion during school drop-off and pickup times and also less traffic accidents. So this is a community issue, not just a school issue, and we want to make sure that we can help better connect our students to services and opportunities in our city and at our schools. And as someone who grew up in a community without public transit, going to college and having to learn how to do that was a big learning curve. So if we can help our students and our youth learn how to use public transit, we can help ensure that we have better-prepared adults in the future. So I thank you for your consideration in this issue and helping our kids be better connected. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay Erickson. Next, we have Cheyenne Grunow.
Hi there. My name is Cheyenne Grunow. I live at 1, or 817A Wisconsin Street here in Oshkosh. I am a student at UW-Oshkosh. I'm in my third year studying education and I'm here to talk about the busing as well. So I have a position as a peer mentor in the Center for Community Development, Engagement, and Training on the university campus and I work with the truancy intervention program in the schools in the Oshkosh area school district. I have one student that I work with who is unable to buy a bus pass. His social worker provides one for him and one day his bus pass ran, it expired, and he was unable to get to school for three days because his family was unable to provide transportation for him. And the social worker took three weeks to get him a new one and therefore he fell more into the truancy program than he had already been. And so with free busing and free transportation for students of the Oshkosh area school district, I think it would benefit not only the student, but many other students in eliminating that worry of can I get to school or not and help them focus on being in school and working on their homework and being a student, rather than those extra effects that they have. So thank you very much for taking this into consideration.
Thank you for coming tonight, Cheyenne. And our third presenter is Adam Belcarelli. All right, correct? Let me move the chair.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Adam Belcarelli, 1624 Western Street. I have two kids that go to Reed Elementary. I'm involved in the PTO at Reed. I am a member of the Oshkosh, City of Oshkosh Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I'm on the Fox Valley Thrives Transportation Team. I'm a family mentor with the Oshkosh Kids Foundation. I'm not a spokesman for any of those organizations, but because of those organizations, I have been working on the student busing plan and I had thoughts for a long time. And it's really important to each of those organizations for a little bit different reason, but they're all connected. And one of the reasons we want to have community-supported busing is because schools are still the most encouraging and uplifting and positive places most of our students spend their day at in any part of their lives. And the more that the community can show that we are spending public money to make it easier for them to get to that place that's going to help them better their lives, the better off our whole community becomes. And that is, I think, the point that often gets missed in what we're trying to do in who should pay for it and how it's going to run and all of that can be figured out if we keep the idea and then remember that schools are where students go to break all the bad cycles that we experience in our society. School is where people go and where, and these students start to develop that, the social connections that they need to better themselves and that we need a society, a society for them to develop so that we can have responsible citizens, good employees, all these things that we need as they grow up, but also we need educated transit riders. And so when this plan came about, and it was a small thing to take, take on, is this three years, the money is, it's definitely able to be gotten, but we have to think about the ways that it's not only impacting something as complicated and messy as truancy, but also in all of these other aspects of education and engagement with the community, with the schools, and for families to be able to get to the things they need to get to. And so a lot of the arguments that I've heard have made me yell at my TV a lot and I've been trying to cut down on that. So I figured I'd come and talk. How do we answer those questions? How do we figure out solutions to those problems and have everybody on the same page, seeing that by having community-supported busing, we are able to, as a community, show students we value their access to better themselves. And in every aspect that we can do that, that's going to pay off in spades down the road.
Thank you very much for coming. Your time is up, unfortunately. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you so much. All right, we have one workshop agenda this evening that is Athletic Sports Complex Discussion with Dr. Gunlock, Mrs. Schnorr, and the Community Indoor Athletic Facility Committee members.
So if you don't mind, Dr. Harris, all guys there coming up to the table to come speak with us, we're actually, as a school district, from your administration team, we're very excited to bring this conversation forward to you. This group has been engaged with the district now for a little bit over a year about ideas and things that they want to bring to the table and the conversations have gotten to a point now where we need to involve the school board and make sure that people of the, of the Oshkosh community are aware of some potential ideas moving forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Gunlock.
So I don't have a lot to say because it's really, you know, I just, I know that's rare, but...
I really was going to say that, I thought about that.
I just thought I'd get it out there. You know, I was able to, I had the fortunate circumstance to sit in the meeting for, for Dr. Cartwright where we were able to sit down with these gentlemen and talk a little bit about the Community Indoor Athletic Facility proposal. And I think it was a good two-way discussion and part of it was us giving them some information about the future plans that are being considered around the consolidation plan. This is more focused at, at the high school level, at, or at least facility-wise at the high school level, and I'll let them speak to what, what they are thinking, but in a sense, our discussion was briefing them on what But in a sense, our discussion was briefing them on what Phase III and Phase IV might look like in terms of the facility plan, and would any future opportunity around an athletic, indoor athletic facility fit with the way Oshkosh West and North are currently configured, as well as how we might configure them into the future. And one thing that became very apparent is what we could potentially help with is the idea of, we're already doing some, some work with an architectural firm, or we will be. We're going through an RFP process right now. We're going to need to have some ideas about how these facilities will be laid out, at least from a site map standpoint, so we could potentially start to look down the road in terms of taking just a one little baby step forward around design so that, that any facility that might be put in place due to generous donations from our community would be able to not only be used immediately, but also used should the board choose to update, potentially even replace some of the high school facilities in the future. So, I don't know, Sue, if I missed anything? Okay, so I guess at this point, what I would do is probably turn it over to these gentlemen and talk a little bit about some of what they were thinking and some of the stuff that they shared with us, so.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. Appreciate it. I want to first kind of introduce who we are. Ben Benish, Jacob Crowe. My name is Jay Gibson, and then a fourth member is Mr. Mark Vanenable, who can be here tonight due to prior commitments. Really, our discussions began about a year or so ago surrounding the limitations that we found as board members for Oshkosh West Basketball Club in trying to schedule roughly 15 teams during our, during our youth season into primarily what boils down to about four gyms. And we had gone, we, we go through this process about three times during our season, and each, each, I guess, session, if you will, period lasts about a month, and then we kind of repeat the cycle over again. And every time, it's, it's kind of a fight for the primary gyms for the older grades, and some of the smaller grades get, get some, the gym times that aren't as, or the gyms that aren't as functional, let's say. So after a number of discussions, we got to the point where, you know, how, how can we improve this issue? And really, where we got was, we kind of saw what was happening around the state and really locally with a lot of school districts. You have Kimberley, you have Kakona, Westapier should be starting their project, I think, this summer or fall. Plymouth just finished their project in last fall, where they're building indoor athletic facilities for a host of reasons. But the primary reason really that we found through some site visits and discussions with personnel at those districts is those indoor athletic facilities, multipurpose facilities, improve space throughout the whole district. Those districts pretty much have the same problems as we did, as we do. Some of them have some newer gyms, some bigger gyms, so it was a little bit easier, but primarily it was, it was an issue around creating more space, creating more functional, usable space for athletics, but certainly for other things as well. So, we, like I said, about, about a year ago, a little, little less than a year ago, we started making some visits, started asking some questions around, you know, how they got their project started, how they funded it, of course, and then we started meeting with some, some personnel here. At the time, we were asked to kind of shelve our idea, our project due to the potential referendum, which we did. In the meantime, we actually started approaching businesses, local businesses, about potential funding, donations, sponsor, sponsorship ideas. What came out of that was some very well-received discussion back and forth, but almost to a person that we were discussing, they wanted to see pictures. We could, we could paint a picture for them with words, so to speak. We could show them some of the website pictures that are on Kimberley's website, but really they wanted to see kind of what it would look like at the site we would eventually kind of pick, if you will. So, that's kind of where we are today. Questions?
So, if it's okay, just to interject just a little bit, so what we're, what they're proposing to do in the big picture, and if I misspeak, please feel free to jump in at any point in time. What they're proposing to do is to look to have a facility available on the West Campus, but also on the North Campus, and it would be an indoor athletic facility.
So are we talking two separate facilities?
Correct.
Two, okay.
Correct. And so they're looking to fundraise for that in order just to address the concern that they have. It would be, it would go through, as you can hear, private donations. So with that private donations, if I recall correctly in our conversations, we'd have sections of that facility that would be accessible to the community at large. It's also shareable facilities, so in other words, students, for example, from like Lord's Academy would have access to it, or Christian Valley would have access, access to the, to the facilities as well. We would be, they would be looking for, obviously, naming rights to the facility because that's how they're fundraising for that. It would require us to do a revision to some of our board, a couple of board policies. We're going to get to naming rights in order to accommodate that.
Which we have done in the past, too.
Correct. We, sure, absolutely. For example, Alberta Kimball Auditorium is a, is a prime example.
And the new weight room at West, too. That was our most recent, I think.
So we have done these things in the past. It's just we would have to address our current policies in order to allow for that to, to continue forward. I know that some of the things that, some of the questions that they have as well as, okay, what if we fundraise and we were able to get all the money for one site but not the other site? Do we have to wait in order to, before we can start on one while we're continuing to fundraise on the second? I advise that that was actually a very good question that the board would need to answer because those are, those are things that, as your superintendent, are outside my purview in order to provide appropriate direction. Did I summarize that well?
Yeah, absolutely. We would be, to my knowledge, we would be the first two high school district to kind of enact this type of project. Most, if not all, of the high schools that have done a project like this have been single high school districts, so it's made it, obviously, a little bit easier. We, we all live on the West Side. We all have kids that go to West Side schools, but almost from the beginning, we talked about this being a community-based project. We didn't necessarily involve anyone from North High School right away because we just didn't know how far this would even go. That's, that has now been the case the last couple meetings and moving forward. However, one of the questions, and you said it correctly, Dr. Cartwright, is we've always talked about our group funding for the project that would be at West High School. Not saying that we wouldn't certainly help out, we wouldn't offer consultation, whatever. Yeah, we would work parallel with them, but we would want to make sure from the beginning that there was at least a discussion on what would we do if one group got to a certain point where that project could move forward and another group didn't, right, either one? So we just want to make sure those were, were upfront, those questions and answers were upfront.
Any questions or comments from board members?
I have.
Go ahead.
So you had mentioned that the fundraising would be separate between North and, and West, if we did two separate facilities. Why are we going in the direction of two different facilities? Why are we not doing one larger facility in like a central area? Why did, just a question like, well, how did that come to be?
Yeah, so in our discussions with some of the districts that we spoke to, they actually looked at plans like that, central within their district. And what they found, I guess, was that it was going to be a little bit harder to maintain, number one, because there weren't personnel at that site.
Right.
Number two is the, the use of the.
The accessibility for the kids to get in it and stuff, right? If it wasn't odd school grounds?
Yeah, from a physical education standpoint, from an after-school, how would those students get there?
So it just seems to be a better fit when those facilities are actually on school property within distance of the school itself?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Mrs. Garner, if you'd be willing to.
I'm not sure this is, might be too early in the process, but what sports are we talking about that can be held in these facilities?
Well, it's probably easier to answer what sports can't be.
We can do that.
Really, it's, it's any sport that needs a hard surface. So we're talking about an indoor facility that is synthetic or turf-based, much easier to maintain. I know there are a few schools that looked at doing field houses or gymnasiums and got to the point of the indoor turf facility because it was, it was actually a lower cost. The drawback was it eliminated some sports from practicing or certainly holding games in there, basketball being the obvious one. But for the most part, most of the schools hold football practice there, track practice, gymnastics.
Volleyball, gymnastics, basketball.
Dance, band, you name it.
Right.
So there aren't too many that can't be, can't utilize the facility.
Okay. And then I assume then the, the school district would assume ownership and as well as all maintenance and all costs associated with it?
Correct. That's a little bit out of our realm. Really, we view ourselves as kind of the fundraising arm part of this.
Good enough.
We have discussed ideas that we could certainly present at some point as far as how to offset those costs.
Okay.
But, correct.
Yeah.
We do assume that the.
Somebody has to.
District would maintain and all that.
Okay.
And insurance especially.
Yeah, liability, that's right. And then I was wondering, does this in any way compete with the YMCA?
We, yeah, we actually, we met as a group on Monday, and that, that came up. You know, I, I don't know because I don't know how many, there aren't too many, at least, high school sports that practice there.
Sure.
And there are certainly students that go there after school, but I, I don't think in too many ways it does.
Are we looking at swimming or hockey in either of these?
No.
Okay. So that would be better. Because that, the Y is mainly, yeah, okay.
And, okay, so I guess that's all my, those are my initial questions. Thanks.
Sure. Thank you. I don't know who's gonna, I don't know where to, where to put this question, but I, I guess my, my question revolves around the actual construction of the facilities. You know, we have a process as a school district that we have to follow in regards to putting out proposals for bids and stuff like that, and I know that sometimes projects like this can, sometimes there's a gray area outside of that where construction companies or general contractors will provide a good deal in regards to construction and stuff like that. And so I'm, I'm wondering, you know, how, how do we, how do we gauge that? How do we balance that? Because we're talking about a, a public facility here. But I make the example of one that's very familiar is Pollock Pool was very much built around in this, in this, in this way, and it was not, it did not follow a public RFP process that was done through the foundation, where the foundation put a bid out, and one of their benefactors of that construct reconstructed that. And so.
That's, that's kind of my question is what is, what do we have to follow in regards to the creation of these facilities?
Those are very good questions, Mr. Pashal. Some of those are, I think, 10-mile-down-the-road type questions for right now, of which we're not prepared to answer those questions, but we can research those questions for you. I would probably expect that legal counsel, they would probably advise us, and again, it's a suspicion, but I'd have to verify for you, that they would advise us to go with our typical process and procedures, given that the, the district would assume responsibility, ownership and responsibility of the facility, and that you're going to want to ensure that that facility is built to the, the proper specifications that are required of all school districts across the state. So, but again, that's a question that's kind of 10 miles down the road, so we really haven't, haven't broached that, that just yet.
Yeah.
I mean, I would think this, this eventually is going to become district property, so I would hope that we'd work really close together so that, I mean, things like HVAC that are consistent, and if the district is going to end up maintaining those facilities and wanting them, we're going to make sure they're up to the district standards.
Right. Absolutely.
That's not my issue in, in any way. It's, it's just that making sure that a, a public facility is, is really bid out in a, in a public way, and that, that there's a real clear process as to how that project, project gets built in our community and who it supports, who's doing the, the work, and that's, that's what's important to me. I, I have no concerns about the relationship of building the facility or maintaining the facility once it's done, but it's, to me, it's, it's a really important aspect of, of the economic generator that building these two types of facilities can do for our community. And, and so, thank you.
I really like the idea of collaboration, and I like the idea of collaborating with people in the community, so I, this is a great, great project. We would need to review our policy on naming rates because I recall when we were building a West Side K-8 school, which became Carl Traeger, before it became Carl Traeger, I was actually on that, that naming committee, and one of the names that came forward at that time was Michael Jordan, excuse me, the singer.
Michael Jackson.
Michael Jackson. Thank you.
Different Michael.
Well, it was probably a good thing that it wasn't named Michael Jackson in my sight, but there were a number of names that were submitted, and they were eliminated because they didn't fit the guidelines at that time. Hopefully, the guidelines have been revised since 1995 or '06, but I, that would, that would be something we would certainly want to look at as a board with those naming rights, what the variables are in terms of those naming rights. I also like the idea that these facilities would be available to the physical education students. And we do know that at North High School, there's an opportunity for people from the community to come in and walk the halls as long as they're registered and they made certain guidelines to come in and do that, to use that as a means of physical activity. So I think there are many positives to what you're promoting here, and so I, I do support us moving forward with this and seeing what we can do. We sometimes refer to North High School as our new high school. I believe that was built in 1972, which makes it older than any of the people in this room. And our old high school was built in 1960, and that used to host the high school graduations. If you can imagine, hundreds of students and hundreds of parents and family members crowding in there. I think they limited maybe two tickets or something like that for people to get in there, and then they had the band, they had the choir, they had risers in there. It was, it was pretty interesting to be part of, part of that group. So my point in all of that is that there hasn't been much changed, as far as I'm aware, of the actual perimeter of that West Gym since it was constructed, and it's pretty limiting in terms of contests, and as you're suggesting, there are so many youth groups that vie for the facilities. We've had discussions at the policy governance committee regarding outside groups coming in and using our facilities, and so I believe our two activity directors, Mr. Judarsky and, and Mr. Leader, thank you, have, have done a good job of keeping us apprised of the interest in use of facilities and enhancing our facilities, expanding them would certainly help address some of those needs. Thank you. Anyone else?
If I may?
Yes.
Only because I know the one question that they brought to the table we have not discussed.
Yeah.
Do we need an answer tonight or we need to just discuss it?
Um, I think it's more of just a discussion to see, to get an idea of what, what, what concerns or-
The question is if one, one gets there and the other one doesn't.
Yeah, that's, I was just, yep. I feel like that's hard to answer because you don't know if the one gets there and the other one's just short a few thousand dollars, then it feels, no.
How about if the question-
It'd be easy to feel like, oh, they'll get it, right? But what do we do if one fundraises for theirs really fast and the other one's still way behind?
I think that's a question we have to answer.
That's-
Can, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So, just in regards to putting that in the forefront of, of how you're, um, going at, going out and, and asking and your, your, your group of people that you're working with, um, right now, you, I think you guys, you said that you, you kind of represent the West side of, 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 of the district and such. And so is there an active group right now that you're working with that, that does or is supportive of the work on the North side of town, northeast side of town?
Not to my knowledge. Just Craig Leader, I guess, is, would be the, he's, he's in, he's in on these meetings with us, so that's, but not specifically community members.
Okay.
What, what allows us to, to assist with the fundraising is having, uh, the whole school district be involved. That's a real positive for both groups. So if, if one business or a person wants to donate money to Oshkosh School District. But we're thinking potentially if one wants to donate just to North because they have a tie or just to West, that could happen. Um, so if, if one of those meets their goal to assist, we'd like to have that thought process of, okay, let's kind of push. Cause obviously if we waited and we're, you know, months and years, that person loses interest in the project.
I, I think the issue here is that if, depending on how things are fundraised, it could create a disparity, you know? Um, and, and then it could bring us back to that conversation, is it more efficient to build one central facility versus two facilities in regards to the use of, of community dollars that are being fundraised? And that, um, and I, you know, I, I don't, I'm just speaking hypothetically. I actu- I feel that, um, that if we, if, if the group that's working on this puts out the charge to the community to say, we wanna build two facilities so that there isn't a disparity and we wanna do it, uh, in tandem. We don't wanna build one before the other, let's work as a community to do this. I, you know, I, I, I think the message of, of how we want to do that is really important.
I agree.
But if we begin to talk about one side getting more or raising more money than the other side, that's, that's where we start to create a disparity in regards to the benefits of the project. You know, it'll create a bad taste in the community that way, which is what we don't wanna do, right? We want everyone to be together so that we can, can fundraise together to, to, to enhance both high schools, so.
And, and to kind of backtrack a little bit, how the, part of the discussion started was, um, you know, maybe the, this was kind of our project, um, at West High School. Maybe North has a different project.
Sure.
Right.
Uh, that, that they would like to fundraise for, not necessarily an indoor facility, but, um, you know, something else. So, um, and then it kind of morphed recently into, let's do the same thing at both schools. It, you know, it makes sense, they have some of the same needs and, and issues that, that, um, kind of brought this idea up.
I have a thought, just an idea to kick around, and that is, what if we just flip it the other way? What if there is a concerted effort, knowing that we're gonna have two facilities eventually and we, we really target one to start with? And then, uh, once we get the funding to a certain threshold, then we go after the other. It's a different way of doing it. It is what we're doing right now with our facilities plan. We are starting at the elementary level and the middle school and then we're eventually, so we're doing it too. And it, it can help us to focus on getting something up and running for the community to see and to witness and to experience, which then will help the next one, I don't know, just an idea.
I mean, many of you are well versed in private funding more so than we are. We're, we're simply just going and talking to businesses and trying to build, build the, um, the idea. Um, you know, um, time is, we certainly wanna, wanna be careful about, um, the time aspect to, to any private funding because once you start that process, if too much time lapses between-
Yep.
The project starting and, and when that person is ready to hand a check over, um, you know, business climates can change, political climates can change.
Right.
You know, there's a whole host of things, right? Um, so I think having some type of plan in place, whatever direction we go, i- is very important before we really, um, drive home the, the, the private funding part.
Let's see, uh, amount of, uh, indoor-
Yeah, good question.
Athletic facility.
Yeah, so they, they range a little bit, um, depending on size and, and whatnot. Um, but we're probably, um, i- i- anywhere in estimation of, uh, three and a half to six million dollars, somewhere, somewhere in that range.
The, the Kimberly facility is kind of what we keep alluding to, right? And I think, uh, correct me though, I, I think it's a sixty thousand square foot, correct, facility? It's a fifty-five yard football field. Um, and then if you turn sideways, the soccer field is a full half-
Yeah.
Soccer field.
Right.
Um, you know, and then, uh, the, there's a baseball diamond built into the corner and, uh, nets that come down for golf and baseball.
And a track.
And a tracks around, right, yeah.
Do you know what they paid?
Five million gets you.
Yeah, they, they're about, uh, five, five million.
Yeah.
Is that also the ballpark figure for Kokona?
No, Kokona's was much smaller. They did theirs first. They all, but theirs was tied into a referendum, I believe, and had other projects that were in, tied into it, mainly moving their football field on-site from a, from a park that was downtown.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they actually, um, when we went and visited with them, the, the referendum of theirs, I think it was last fall, that, that did not pass, part of that, I believe, at least we were told when we met with them a year ago, was to expand their indoor facility because they knew it wasn't as big as they probably should've done it. Um, the, the biggest, really the biggest difference with a lot of these is ceiling height.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Kokona's is a, a standard thirty ceiling height, which is what most gymnasiums are. Um, Kimberly, Sussex Hamilton, Plymouth, I believe, are pretty close to sixty.
Wow.
Right, so that adds a little bit of cost to that as well, but also allows them to do more things, so.
So, sorry, the number that you just stated, that's, that's for both facilities?
No, that was for, yeah.
Thank you, sorry.
I'm not sure we've answered the question yet. Did you want to?
Oh, well, I was, I was going to ask another question. Um, when we fundraise or when the community fundraises, do you think it's possible to just put it all in one pot? Would donors be interested in saying, yeah, I'm gonna give this amount and I'm comfortable with it being split evenly between the two schools? I don't know.
I, I foresee that happening, but I also foresee potentially someone coming forward and say, hey, I'm a West grad. I'm gonna give money to West. I see that happening?
Yeah.
Speculation, but I think-
Yeah, I thi- I agree with you. I think it's more, um, it's not the parents currently, that would be like, no, I only wanna give to one, even though my kids all go to West, I would do it evenly. I think it'd be more of your alumni.
Yeah.
They're doing it like a gift.
Yeah, I absolutely can see that.
Cause that's, I'm thinking from, and I don't own a business, but from a business standpoint, I think you'd want to donate evenly.
Right, yes.
So we're thinking it's more like alumni.
Yeah, I can see definitely alumni saying one over, yeah.
That would have a separate pot, okay.
So, I, from, I guess from my perspective is, is I, I wanna provide the most flexibility to go forward with a plan. Um, and, um, and I think this would be a missed opportunity if we were to just sit here and say, if you, you know, if you can't do both, you can't do, if you don't have enough for one, you can't do the other.
Yeah.
Um, and personally, I think, you know, Allison, I think you're right, if you build one, it actually helps build the next. Cause then you get to see what it looks like and what it could be.
(cough)
Uh, and can actually learn from it as well. Because, uh, say there's something that got left out or something that, you know, you wanted to change, uh, that, that other facility then has the ability to, to adapt to those changes as well. So, um, I, I, I believe, I'm, I, I do believe that it creates, um, a public relations kind of view of disparity if we, if we go along with that. But at the same time, I feel that it, it supports and enhances, uh, the possibilities that we could have at, at all schools in regards to that, that facility. So, I, I'm comfortable moving forward with, under, with the understanding that if one has the ability to be built before the other, um, that, that we go forward with that. Um, so even though I think there's a public, there's, could be a public, perceived public perception of, of, of that, that could be challenging with that, so.
I think what needs to happen though is that North's AD's gotta form.
Yeah.
Your, what you have, that they have to have something at North to, to do that.
Sure.
Yeah, we, 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 um, we've discussed that and, and I think that's an extremely important part because, um, we wanna be able to communicate with them and vice versa, I'm certainly, because we're gonna make sure we're not both, um, targeting the same donors at the same time.
Right.
And the donors get confused on, well, you know, what am, what am I donating to which project, you know? Um, so there, I think there has to be discussions there. I would, um, disagree a little bit on the public perception part, only because if you had a plan in place and was very clear to the public on, this is what we're doing, and they knew that the other project was gonna go forward, we just wanted to get one built before the other one first.
Okay.
I, I think that helps a lot. I, I really do. Um, they, they know that there's going to be two. Um, it's just a matter of, you know, we're starting with one and we'll get, we'll eventually get to the other one.
I'm not disagreeing with you either. I think, I think having a plan and communicating that plan is absolutely imperative to the success. I think I'm more coming from the perspective of the historical view of how our community has looked at things. Um, and, um, and just what goes along with that. I don't, I don't disagree with you in, in, in any way, so.
I agree with Mr. Evans. I think it's important that there be a message communicated from North in terms of, yes, they also wanna enhance their facilities and here's at least a big picture view of what that might be or what that might look like. Because I think when you three and, and the rest of your group goes out to businesses, you're probably going to be asked, what about North? And it would be good for you to have some talking points and something to share, um, so that people realize that, yes, this is a, a two-phase or a two-pronged approach and that we, uh, we definitely want to enhance facilities in both, uh, sites.
Yeah, we, we stayed out of it a little bit, uh, only because, again, I go back to our original, um, discussions is, we really want them, we don't wanna, we don't want there to be a perception from us, we're telling them what to do.
No.
Like, this is the project you guys have to do.
No.
They may have another project at their site that they feel is more of a necessity. Um, and again, we are more than happy to help with that and, 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 uh, work parallel with them and, and help with fundraising.
Yeah, that's a win-win. Like you talked, it's, it's the business pitch, it's, it doesn't overwhelm, whether you're on the North side or the West side, when you're raising for one school district. So that helps both two of the, you know, schools to pitch as a, a big pot project, for sure.
Have we given enough direction here?
Are you guys clear?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did we make it clear?
Did we make it clear yet?
I, I guess, I, I didn't, we didn't know if, if tonight was, it was gonna be decided, uh, the, the, I guess-
Drawings.
Drawings. That, that's really, our next step would be to get some drawings that we can go out.
To legitimize our pitch, yeah.
That would be, that would be our recommendation as well, that we would proceed, cause we're already doing drawings.
Aren't you guys meeting like in the second week in March with architects?
Yep, we're selecting an architect now. We're gonna be doing some things in terms of rough drawings for the new middle school, elementary school. Um, we would attach, uh, this part to that particular work.
Okay.
Um, it would be help assisting with the development of the drawings for the facility and also how it would plug into existing site maps at both West High and North High.
Okay.
You know, one of the things that we talked about in our meeting was, um, in phase three, when we reconstruct West High, is that on the same site? Cause if you build an indoor facility there and all of a sudden we move the, the high school somewhere, they're not gonna pick that up and move it. So we wanted to very much say, hey, this is still a site that we would be using in phase three. And in fact, here is sort of the footprint of how that would work. So we have basic knowledge that if a site is, money is raised for it, it's built, it's running, it's attached to existing high school cause we're gonna get moving on this. What happens when we do rebuild West? Can we hook it to that as well? So that's where some of this work is gonna have to be done on our end anyways. So why wouldn't we just have a little synergy here and do some of the work in advance?
Great.
So that's, that's what we would be looking at recommending.
Correct. And so it would not necess- is not something a resolution for tonight.
Right.
For voting on.
Right, yeah.
And a lot of the, the work that, um, we're looking to go forward in is already within our scope of work as Dr. Gunlock was already mentioning. Um, so what this would be with-
Just a blueprint of the size of the building.
Yeah, when we're going with the RFP, with the architect, the, just understanding that some of the scope of work that we're looking at would be included within that. So again, it's not a, it's not a board action item per se. Um, and the amount that it would cost, um, in order to even do renderings of just those facilities would be with, um, we are projecting would be within the amount that's allowable for, um, administration to be able to proceed in without having to have board approval.
Okay, good.
Um, but again, this is a very public thing, um, and we want to make sure that the board is completely aware of what's going on and that you're not blindsided with this. Um, and also to bring the commu- the conversation out into the public as well.
Good. Yes, sir.
I think by talking about this publicly at this point is really, really important. Um, especially if we're talking about going to referendum and building new schools. It makes absolute sense that, that your staff puts in the effort to, 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 to blueprinting that out. So that's, I think that makes absolute sense.
Mr. Gibson, you asked, um, that we would bring a pitchers. Are you talking for your, to bring to fundraising and things, are you looking for indoor pitchers of kind of what? So how far are you on that aspect? Because I would assume we're just going to do outside, like this is the blueprint, this is how big the facility would be? I mean, we're not gonna get into what's inside of it, are we yet?
Well, I think you might have to because, because if they're gonna go forward with, A, A, the inside's gonna determine what the outside is, number one.
Okay.
So, you know, in terms of determining the actual square footage of the facility, how things would be laid out.
So what's in there? So we kind of, we're already got it?
Plus, if, if, imagine if you were a donor, I, I, if I was a donor, I would wanna see exactly-
Well, that's what I was asking.
Exactly what are we gonna have in terms of services and what problems are we solving with my note, with my donation?
Cause he had asked for indoor, I would assume they were indoor pitchers so they could see what they were relating to. But when, when, when the district's meeting with the architects in March, um-
They can do renderings.
So they can do renderings, yeah.
And, and theirs is gonna be a lot, frankly, a lot more developed than the middle and the elementary school renderings because we, we, we go so far down the road so we can cost it out properly and have a good idea of-
Got it.
Site-wise, what does the exterior look like? If you remember when we did Oaklawn?
Yeah.
We had a kind of good idea, but once we got actual referendum approval, that's when you really sit down and put pen to paper and you talk to the teachers and the programs, et cetera, and really flesh out the deep details for the inside. This particular project would have, is less complex because it's, it's a singular facility. Um, and they have a pretty good idea of what they'd want on the inside, so it wouldn't be too difficult for us to do.
Okay.
And if I may, just for a point of clarification, and the reason I'm doing this very intentionally is because we have two very large, well, we have three, three very large topics that we're discussing tonight, this being the first one. So just to recap on this, this is a project that we would not be going forward on, on the referendum, okay?
Right.
This is a community partnership and we're extraordinarily grateful for that partnership in order to build, um, new facilities on, um, onto the school, you know, on school property, basically, to provide services or a, a facility that will allow services to be available for our student population as well as the community at large. Um, so I just wanna make that very clear so, because this can get very confusing and muddy.
Sure.
As people continue on the conversation, go on forward on this, this is, this is item number one that we're talking about tonight of three very large items. Um, and, but again, this is not one where we're, where we're saying, okay, this is a referendum or part of, um, the consolidation. This is not related to the other conversations that we've been having. However, the timing was, is critical at this point in time as they're moving forward and they just, we needed to gauge, um, the, where the- and, um, they just, we needed to gauge, um, the, where the, um, the conversation outward, not gauge, but we needed to make the conversation public, um, so that everyone is aware of what's going on, so that we, we can try to handle some of that confusion on the front end, um, and make sure people understand it's a dis, it's its own distinct project.
Thanks. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
I think in the meantime, we can ask that our facilities and governance committee take a look at our naming rights, so that we, um, have that clearly defined.
Policy and governance.
I'm sorry.
What does she call it?
Policy.
About facilities, okay?
Too many, too many things tonight. Sorry. Policy and governance, and ask them to take a look at that policy and where
Got it.
That might need some revision, and that might, uh, help then to have some input from this committee as well, in terms of what your thoughts are.
Can I just point out, this may be kind of random, but you all said you were with the West Basketball Club, right?
Correct.
So they are with the basketball club and they want to make a facility that'll benefit golf, soccer, football.
All the other sports.
Right? Which I understand, it's because it'll free up space for you in the gym, but... I still think that's really admirable, that instead of just trying to figure out how to problem solve for your sport, you're actually.
For the community.
Looking out to help the other sports, I don't know. I just thought that was worth noting, I think that's cool.
Also, like, when we've gotten these places to hear what multi-sports and what it does for kids for education and stuff, when they have the places to go and how much their grade point average has improved and all the stuff, that's
Yeah.
What really had honed us with our kids and stuff, that you really see the effect it can have on students, so.
I remember practicing fast pitch in a basketball gym, that's kind of weird. So, makes sense, it would be nicer to have that facility.
Well, this, this personally moved forward, um, so last year, um, I, we have an older son that plays JV football and they were getting ready to play Kimberly, um, and it was raining that week, and I went to pick them up and they were outside, and so I went inside thinking they were in one of the gyms and they were actually in the cafeteria. So, it, you know, it is what it is, everybody does what they can, we're, we're, we're just trying to better the situation. We really, big picture, we really look at this as a draw for the district. You've got corporations that are obviously expanding, you've got, um, leaders that are going to be looking to move to the community. The first thing that they're probably going to do, maybe the second thing, is start looking around at the schools.
Right.
So, um...
I think any parent in the district will, it's heart, disheartening. I've got three kids, lots of sports, and to have to travel for football for It is. Seven years and go to these schools, and then, you know, we're traveling them out of state and, and all the stuff that he did, and then now for volleyball, and we cannot, I've never come here, except for track, the first game, but we had it at Kohl's, or the first meeting, it was at Kohl's. Yeah. And, I mean, if anybody's gone to those, they have like forty-five heats of like one thing, because, you know, they don't, anyway, so, um, and even swimming. We really are the bottom of every sport that we do. Thank goodness that we got our new tracks, because I know that there was districts out there that were saying we're not coming anymore because of how bad our tracks, tracks were. I know we have problems with tennis right now. We are traveling all over volleyball right now, which, I mean, I have kids in all these sports, and we are constantly traveling to all of the, I mean, the Champions Center in Appleton. Holy cow, so there, they do really draw in that money, they draw in those big con, or those big arenas for those things, and I would really love to ha, host some ourselves in Oshkosh. That would be, I'm tired of traveling. I want it here, and I'm so tired of hotels sometimes, like, I just wanted to hear, I want to go home at night to some of these things and have everybody else travel, that would be kind of nice. But, thank you guys so much, because this is really needed for our community.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right, moving on then to our next agenda item, that's a consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background information on each item, or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. Are there any items that anyone wishes to pull from the consent agenda? I did, I'd like to pull number eight. Number eight, okay. Anyone else? And I would like to pull six B. All right, so the board then will, are there, I'm sorry, are there any others? All right. The board then will consider approval of one minutes of January twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty regular board meeting, two minutes of January twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty executive session of regular board meeting, number three minutes of February twelfth, twenty-twenty regular board meeting, number four minutes of February twelfth, twenty-twenty executive session of regular board meeting, number five bills payable, number six personnel, A, appointments, temporary appointments, resignations and salaries. Excuse me. Number seven, twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one school calendar revision, and number nine, purchase of property located at twelve forty-five Kentucky Street, Oshkosh, Wisconsin.
Second.
Please call the rule.
Peschall?
Aye.
Peschall, aye. Selagi?
Aye.
Selagi, aye. Carlin? Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye.
Aye.
Garner, aye.
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye.
Aye.
Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Moshe and Carey.
Thank you very much. Resolution number six B. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approved the retirements as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second. Once again, I had asked this, uh, resolution be, this type of resolution be pulled to recognize the retirements of three individuals who have donated lots of years to our school district and to improving the education of our students. Stana Mack, uh, has served as an ESL teacher in the district for many years. I believe she started at Washington School. She will be retiring from Oaklawn Elementary School as of the end of June of this year, and she's been, she will have been an employee for twenty-five years in the district. Brian Miguel is a fifth grade teacher who will be retiring from Oakwood Elementary School. His effective date of retirement is June fourth, twenty-twenty, and he will have been employed with the district for approximately twenty-seven years. And Paula Nerkowski, a cook, Oshkosh West High School, uh, she is actually retiring at the end of April, and again, she will have served the district for nearly twenty-seven years. We want to wish these people all the best in retirement for a long, healthy and happy and satisfying retirement, and thank them for the contributions that they have made to the, the children and their families in our school district. Any other comments? Please call the rule.
Selagi?
Aye.
Selagi, aye. Carlin? Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Peschall?
Aye.
Peschall, aye. Moshe and Carey.
Thank you very much. Resolution number eight, be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve revisions to policy seventy-four forty, school safety, as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education. So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Olsted?
Yes, I had asked that this, um, be pulled. I know that, um, we discussed it, um, last time at our board meeting, I had brought it to your attention when I had reported back for the policy governance meeting. I had asked it to be pulled so that Mr. Jones could come and explain what this is, um, with our new program and what Raptor is, just so that we know a little bit, it was just really interesting to me, and I don't think that the common community understands that it's a whole new system, they just think that we're changing some doors around. So I just wanted, um, just give a, a quick, um, overview of what we're doing.
With visual aids?
I know, I'm excited.
I do, I came to, uh, I came prepared. Thank you, Kelly, for the opportunity here.
Sure.
The safety of our students and staff is our highest priority in the district, and, uh, to do that, we have to be proactive, and we've been doing a layered approach over many years, and this will continue, uh, forward, and this is just our next layer, uh, that we'll be doing. Part of keeping students safe, um, is knowing precisely where everyone is in the building at all times, and the system called Raptor, uh, will do this. This system, which I'll be going through and reminding several times to tell you, will be implemented throughout our entire district on March sixteenth, so a, a couple of weeks. We want to give everybody a heads up, um, and we'll be doing that. The Raptor system will be required for all visitors, um, to our schools, um, and if you especially want to, uh, a little more closely, if you want to move past the office area, this will be required. If you're just simply dropping off a package or a lunch, um, this won't be required, but if you want to move past the office area
Art project.
Into the building, uh, this system will be required. A quick overview of the system, when, when you come to the office, um, you'll be asked to take your ID, you know, such as your driver's license, and you'll just place it in the slot like that. And, and what it will do, it will, once that happens, this, uh, two pieces of machinery will be hooked up to a computer, it will then quickly scan the national database for anybody that's on the sex offender list, and, um, it will, it'll tell us either that you are on the list or you are not. If you are approved to enter the, the building, um, then what it will do over here, uh, over here, it will print out a sticker for you, a, a badge that you are to wear, and on that badge will have your picture that was taken from your ID. Also, the attendant that will be talking to you will ask you what's your location, where would you like to go, example, the lunchroom or a classroom, you know, room, you know, two eleven, and that, all that information will be printed on the badge. And so people will then come into, to, to the, uh, to the school. After they leave the school as well, they're going to be required to check out with the system, and so we will have a log system of, at any moment, people will tell you there are six visitors at the school, these are their names, this is the locations that they're at, and so that's, that's what we're going to do. Some of the questions that we can clear up right away tonight, um, some of the common questions we've received already is, what if I come to school and I forgot my, my driver's license or my ID? First of all, let me talk about the ID. It'll accept many forms of ID, a military, uh, driver's license, et cetera, many different forms of ID. We just really need, uh, the name, your picture and a birthday, um, that's the only information we'll be collecting. If you forgot it, and you, you had to get into the school, uh, and go past the office, that's not a problem, you'll just tell the attendant your name, they will manually type it into the system, and again, it will check against the database, uh, to make sure that, that you are allowed into the school. This is a new system, as I said, it's going to be implemented at all of our schools on March sixteenth, Monday, March sixteenth. To do that, you're going to see, we'll have posters, uh, at each door, uh, kind of reminding people that this is a new system, and, and the Raptor system will be there and how to do that, and again, an attendant will walk you through it, um, and any questions, they'll be, be able to answer those questions. We have a, a, uh, quite a bit of information rolling out to parents in, in several methods. First, uh, information we'll send out to all families via our infinite campus system, um, that'll be happening next week, it'll also be placed in our newsletters, uh, for the next couple of weeks as well. There'll be, uh, a FAQ placed on our website starting next Tuesday with frequently asked questions, uh, so people can get more information on our website about the system, and, uh, again, we wanted to thank everyone for making our schools safer. This is a system that has been used by several districts around us as well and across the state, and matter of fact, across the country. So it's a well-vetted system and it, it seems to work quite well. And again, I want to thank all of, of the school personnel, all of our, our community members and people that come to our schools, want to thank them ahead of time for, for their patience as we start this new system up, uh, again, March sixteenth, mid-year, so please expect that, uh, March sixteenth, but this will be our new procedure, um, for all schools.
Awesome. Seems like a great way to enhance, take another step forward in enhancing security and safety in our buildings, so I thank everyone who's been involved in this. I'm sorry, Mr. Peschall, I'd like to ask you that.
So, walk through where a visitor might interact with this program at different levels of our schools, say the elementary, middle and high school. So is, I, so, do you understand the question?
Keep going.
Okay. I guess what I'm looking for...
It's the same at all, at all schools, that much I can tell you.
Well, then let me, let me make the, let me make the example.
Sure.
That, um, when you go to West High School, there are multiple entry points at West High School.
Not anymore.
So, now there's just?
One.
One.
One, okay. So, and I think that's, that's an important thing to talk about to parents and community members, that you, now there's one centralized location where you have to utilize this system.
As a West parent, that's, I've got three letters about it already.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, we, they, they're, Mrs. Cole is definitely keeping us in the know and, and already has resplied back twice to questions that parents already had, and the parent advisory committee knew about it, and they actually talked to a bunch of us parents about it too.
And the students are giving...
So as a West parent, yeah, and my, my kids already know too, and have, that they can only come back, so even the students can only come back to one door now.
That's good.
So that's a little like, she's, you know, so I'm like, if I take her out at this time, she's got to go back at door thirty-eight, she can't go back through twenty-four anymore, even if her class is right there because of the system. So the kids all know too.
So, so there's a check-in?
Correct.
There's a checkout, and so, now that relates to all visitors?
All visitors.
What about students?
Uh, students, we already have, they, they would just come to the, they'd have to come in because they only come in one door.
Sure.
They just present their ID, which they, they normally do, they know the drill, so we know that they belong, and they would be checked in, and on one way, they would not be using the system.
Okay.
Again, this is intended only for visitors to our school. Students, and, and the other question we get, would staff have to use this Raptor system? No, uh, we wouldn't do that, and also we run background checks on them annually, so, there is no, no need for them to be using the Raptor system as well, and we also require our staff to wear badges and IDs as well.
You mentioned using this in schools, would there be non-school buildings owned by the district where this would be used, such as this building?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Not at this time.
If I may, because I know there's three questions that we're, we will receive from our community, so we'll go ahead and address those now.
Okay, great.
And the first question is, Dr. Jones, how are we paying for this?
That's a very good question. We're paying this out of, uh, you may recall, uh, last year we received, uh, and even the previous year, we received two grants in a total of, of five hundred thousand dollars each, uh, close, I won't say a million, but very close to a million, uh, this is part of the safety grant, and that's what's paying for, for these safety upgrades.
And, second, second question is related to, I need to check my student out of school. How does this interact with that?
Well, again, uh, the student, again, only if you want to gain access going past the office is will you, will this interact. You can come to the office and say, I need to pick up my son or daughter, and again, it would not, you would not need to, to interact with the Raptor system, uh, because again, just picking up a child wouldn't have you go past the office area.
And third and final question, um, it's, it is a relatively sensitive question, so so I want to be cognizant of that. But I'm an individual, I'm an undocumented immigrant. What, should I be fearful of this process?
No, not at all. As I said, if you don't have an ID, we would still run you against the, the national database. So if you don't have an ID, or some people are grandparents, other people live near the school, they walk. And maybe they don't drive a vehicle and don't have a driver's license. That will not stop you. There should be no fear at all of the system. And, and it will just again, check against the national database. And if you're not in the national database, then you would be cleared to proceed past the office.
So just for clarification, so we are not reporting information from our system out into the government?
No, we are not.
Thank you.
There is no reporting. The information stays strictly in the system. And again, to be just one step further, the only information, when you present your driver's license or ID, the only information that the system is collecting is your birth date, your picture, and your name. That's it.
How long is that information kept?
That's kept by the Raptor.
For how long?
I don't have an answer to that at the moment. But, but it is kept because if you return, we can put you in and the system will just print your badge. So we have parents that come daily.
Right.
Things like that, or volunteers, that type of thing. People that work in the schools or, or are at our schools, I should say.
Sorry, I thought you were finishing.
Sure. My, I guess my question goes from Dr. Cartwright's statement. So that information not, may not be shared, but it can be requested, correct?
No.
No?
It will not be, it's not released.
Correct.
It is completely contained.
No, no, because an entity can request, can make a request for that information. Even a government entity can make a request for that information. But, correct?
I'm not aware of that, so, I'm not aware of that.
And what I can clarify as well is that this, this particular system is used by significantly larger organizations than ours that have a extremely much, a lot, a lot, much larger population of potential undocumented immigrants.
Sure.
So I just wanted to make that clarification since, in order to be sensitive to-
Sure. I'm caught up on the word "shared." Shared usually means that it's a two-way street, you know, type thing, where we share, you know, information easily with someone. But then there's, there's, there's a difference between that, that information being requested from an entity to another.
To my knowledge, no-
That's where my question is.
To my, to my knowledge, again, there is no third party allowed into this system or access to the system or information.
Okay.
Nor can the information be sold or bought.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
If that clarifies that question.
It does.
Are there any other questions from the board, from Mr. Jones?
Well, thank you for the opportunity to present.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Again, we look forward to this new system.
Thank you, Dr. Jones.
Thank you very much for your time and your efforts there. All right then. Please go to the role.
Yeah.
Carolyn? Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye.
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Olsted?
Aye.
Peschall?
Aye.
Peschall, aye. Selagi?
Aye.
Selagi, aye. Motion, Carrie.
Thank you very much. Now we will move on to individually considered resolutions. The first one is Resolution Number 10. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education commit $30,000 per year for two years in an agreement with the City of Oshkosh to provide free transportation to students on Go Transit Oshkosh as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion?
I'd like a discussion.
If I may, I need to provide the board with some updated information, if that's okay?
Oh, okay, sure.
I appreciate that with that. Thank you very much. And going back and reviewing the resolution that was passed by the council, the, the council members for the City of Oshkosh. With what was proposed, it would cover students who are Oshkosh Area School District students. However, the district in and of itself is required. And we did, we did obtain a legal opinion on this. So it is not, it is not my personal opinion. This is a legal opinion that transportation services extended to the public school students must be offered to private school students as well. So the, the district is required by law to provide private school students the same level of transportation as provided to public school students. So given this information, I did engage in conversation with City Manager Mark Roloff to determine what would we need to do in order to ensure that we provided transportation also to our private school students within the Oshkosh Area School District boundaries. And in order to do that, it would be an additional $3,500 commitment per year. So rather than $30,000 as written in the resolution, it would be $33,500, $33,500 per year in order, in order to ensure that private school-
And that's on us. That's not city.
That's correct.
So city's already voted, they're ponying up 30 grand for the next two years. Each year for the next years. We, we would have to pony up 33, five each for the next two years.
In order to ensure that we provide transportation for, for both, public school as well as private school students.
Okay.
And it's my recommendation to the board to, to, and, and at some, some way, somehow to amend that motion in order to read for the 33,500.
So we got to change.
That's exactly what I was going to bring up. Thank you, Dr. Herzog, or Dr. Cartwright. We, I know that by state law that we have to, all students is all students in Oshkosh. We have to provide, even if they're in private schools, we have to provide them special education in anything that they don't have. So I did know that this would, because it did say just the Oshkosh Area School District. But for me, that's all students, no matter where they go. So I'm glad that we're making that clarification. And that's what I was going to ask about that. So, so the $3,500 is for all private students. It's Lourdes, Seton, Lutheran Valley, Christian, all of them.
That's correct.
So it's all, okay. Thank you.
As long as it's within the Oshkosh Area School District boundaries.
Right. Okay, good.
Even if the child doesn't live in the Oshkosh Area School District boundaries?
That's correct.
Like if it's a kid from Amrell that goes to Lourdes, they would still-
They, no, they can only access city bus for city bus routes.
Yeah.
But that's-
So they'd only go within the city.
Right.
But that's like-
But if they live in Amrell-
Yes.
It is dependent upon-
Correct.
If the, where the school is on.
The school they attend. Yes.
Right.
Then the boundary.
The boundary of the-
Boundary of the Oshkosh Area School District.
Correct.
Right. Yep. Got you. Okay.
I, I have some questions. I don't know, do we want to amend it first and then ask questions?
I think, no. You can ask.
Okay, so the, the big one that I asked last time, just to be like crystal clear, is what is the problem that we are solving?
Well, I can even say to one of our guests today, when she came up and talked to that, this will, this can potentially and hopefully help the truancies.
Okay.
When you have a student who couldn't afford-
Yep.
And then he missed three days of school and then it took his social worker three weeks-
Right.
-to get him another pass. I would have, I would hope that this would solve-
Okay.
And we had another girl come talk to us once ago.
I remember her.
And she said that she, that was her Christmas, that broke my heart. Her Christmas gift was a bus pass to get to school. And that this would, you know, she, then her family doesn't need to worry about that. You know, so there are more students out there that worry about how to get to school than I think our community understands.
Okay.
So I think it would help the truancy for sure.
We also talked about extracurriculars. I don't think that that was a problem that we were trying to solve. However, this could be a side effect if we do that. Then, I don't remember the name, but she's gone. So she was talking about increasing access to health care. So that's just health services.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so my question, just from, you know, if I can step way back, if these are the things that we're hoping that this will solve, are we going to be measuring? And if so, like who's doing it? And when are we going to be looking at this information, this data, to make sure that we're actually solving the problem?
So one of the things that I know City Manager Mark Roloff has discussed is they are putting in place a tracking system so that way they, they can be able to track when it's a student that's accessing the device or not.
So they know when it's a student, so they can track the, the number of rides and whether or not that student was, like, were they paying before and they're not now?
They don't know that. There's no way to track that.
Okay.
But that, we will be able to track going forward.
We can be able to differentiate.
If it's a, if it's a student or not. Other ways in which we'll be able to track data is we do have historical data related to truancy as well as absenteeism rate.
Yep.
But that's something that you can look at. But again, I think it's-
It's not directly correlated always.
It's, I was just about to say, that I would recall, I would advise not going down that route. You know, because each situation is going to be unique for that student.
Okay.
And so we may not be-
Can we measure, can we all, or, sorry.
Go ahead.
Can we also measure extracurriculars? Do we have those kinds of numbers? Is that really done? Okay. Thank you. And then is there, I don't think that's on us, but could, I don't know how we do that. I was just trying to think, like, could we somehow find out are kids accessing healthcare and mental health services at higher numbers? But that means we'd have to have all the healthcare providers give us that.
I, I would caution us not to do that because of potential HIPAA violations.
Just numbers. I wouldn't want names or anything.
Understand.
Okay.
But then you're identifying.
Maybe, yeah.
Potentially.
Because they would have to identify that.
So we're going to be taking ownership of collecting the data for students and whether or not things go up or down. And maybe we can explain that maybe we can't. But can we at least look at it?
We can look at that.
Okay.
We can definitely look at the extracurricular.
I would like for us to at least take that on. Okay, good.
Involvement as well.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Peschall.
Sure. So, great questions.
Thanks, Bob.
So I, I think, first I kind of want to, I kind of want to go at your first question in regards to, you know, trying to fill a need or solve something with this. And, and I think that was one of the things that throughout the conversation of the last two years that I've been, two and a half years that I've been working on this is that it's not necessarily about filling that need or solving that issue. It's about creating access, more access to our community and shaping the person who utilizes those, those surfaces in our community. So that's one of the things that's important to me. I, I believe that it, that it addresses needs in a micro sense, from how we look at things, but not, not from a, a large, big picture sense. So, but I still think that's valid and important. So, the, the data, just talking about the data that it's going to create, right now, as it is, we don't necessarily collect student-ride or data because of the way that the fares are built. And so, and so automatically, we're going to find out data within the first month, two months, three months. How is this affecting ridership? Is there increases? Are they not using? We're going to know some information right away on this. And I, and I think that's one of the things that, that we've talked about for years. And I, and I know that the people that have been working on this in the community have been talking about for years is, let's figure out a way to collect data. So, and I, I, I think, I think that's all I wanted to respond to.
Bob, can you tell me if, since this is all an estimated ridership, if those numbers are dramatically lower than what they estimated? Are these numbers going to change?
I don't know the exact answer to that, but they, they are estimated numbers. We, we might find that we, I should say this, from a city council perspective, that, that number of 30,000 is considered a good, strong number that's based off of the initial cost of what, of what, that, that initial cost of $68, $70,000. And then asking out to all those other entities that you know, that buy bus passes and tokens and stuff, how much they invested into that. And so that's how we got to 90,000 was because there was, the total amount being 90,000 was based off of the community's involvement in, in providing rides. So.
Is the, is the, is the Valley Transit and Mr. Collins, are they open to giving us all those numbers of our riderships? Like, they're going to communicate all of that back to us so that we can look at the numbers? So if all of us can either, the prices are going to go up or they're going to go lower? Or what, how we're actually changing those?
So just to step back myself here, because that's a, that's a weeds question. And, and I need to put myself in the spot of not, of, of not being-
Well, I could ask Dr. Cartwright that question.
That's a Dr. Cartwright question.
Those are, those are discussions that City Manager Mark Roloff and I have been having, yes. That we would be able to track that data and we could share it back and forth.
Yeah. I was asking generally, I mean, just to you, Bob, I'm sorry.
Sure. That's okay.
Mrs. Garner?
Has the other 30,000 been taken care of?
Yes, ma'am. There is currently, for, at least for one year, there is a $30,000 private commitment-
Okay.
-that's available that, that is giving us, will give the option of being able to do 15,000 this year, 15,000 next year. Or, whoa, wait a minute, am I, am I over speaking? I'm over speaking.
Can I?
Please do.
Sure. So, so we, we have a community contribution that can be used to cover the first year, no matter what. Or to balance that out over the first year and the second year. So we have, there is still fundraising going on, I would say, for that. But, but to comfortably say that we have the ability to, to be able to kick this program off July 1st, there's enough funding there for it. As long as we and our bodies agree to a contract and a, some type of agreement on that.
Okay. I have one more question. And that was with the extracurriculars and the jobs and even the healthcare and those types of things. It's pretty unrealistic, in my opinion, that that's going to have any measure because most extracurriculars that my kids are involved in, they're not done by 6 o'clock. And most jobs that my children have had, they go way past 6 o'clock on a weekday night. So I, my question, not that we're going to change anything tonight, but something that's always like in the back of my mind as we are now committing actual real money, is I can't help but think of the lost opportunity of what it would cost to actually extend the service, actual real money, is, I can't help but think of the lost opportunity of what it would cost to actually extend the service, which would help the entire community, not just kids, but single mothers.
There's so many conversations about that.
Okay, so I'm just kicking a dead horse, maybe, I don't know.
Well, can I, can I just, um, theoretical view, big picture view on this, and so, so my view on, on the creation of this program allows our community to create data that's never been collected before, and has never provided a level of access that we've had to generate data around before.
Okay.
Um, and, um, from a, from a city, from a city council perspective, uh, we have to do what's called a, a TDP, it's called a Transit Development Plan. And it basically is a five-year plan that looks at all the, the best, if we had the best scenario, what would we want our, our transit system to look like, and that's what this does, and, and every five years that's updated, and every year, every five years, it says that we want to expand, uh, you know, service into the after, into the evenings and afternoons, and, and part of the challenge, I think, on the city side is that they don't necessarily know where the funding comes from, or where they can get the funding for that. And, um, it, this creates another level of collaboration in creating that, not just with the school district, but also with, um, the business community in regards to, there's lots of talks around that right now, related to that.
Okay, so you're seeing this as a step?
I, I see that this is a tool, this is a tool that we can use to enhance our, our transit system.
Okay.
It creates data that may be supportive, and may make it more comfortable for leaders to be able to, to expand service, or to reshape service.
And if I may also, just as an advisory for the board, um, we've, I've also, um, put into motion, uh, the process to start so that through our education foundation, um, we have a categorical area that's for transportation. So that way, if, uh, businesses or, or individuals want to do that, it allows them to do that and to get tax credit on it as well.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And just thinking forward, potentially after a year or two.
Mr. Peschel.
Sure, um, thank you, um, for, first, I wanna thank you guys first for, for embarking upon this journey, because it, it really is a journey, it's, it's a, it's a new path. And I really appreciate that our community, and that our bodies of government are able to work together, ideally, to make this happen. So I, I just think it's, it's, it's different, I wanna acknowledge that this is different than how other communities are working to solve this problem. And I think that's one of the things that makes it unique and beneficial, um, is because it's different than the other ones. The other thing too is that I, you know, we're talking about how we collect data and how we use data. I know that, uh, within that, the Wannabe County Health Department, they have an intern who is also collecting, his, his internship is about mapping of transportation within our community, um, and, and he's actually here in the, in the audience. And, um, and, and that's part of, that's part of what he's doing, is he's gathering data and mapping where kids are going, ideally trying to map that information, and, and to provide that information to entities that, that can use it, uh, beneficially.
Okay.
So, um, so just, there's, so there's just another level to that data out there.
Good, all right, thank you.
And I just wanna remind the board as well, and I, I appreciate Mr. Peschel, um, and the verbiage that you just provided to us, that this is actually in complete support of our vision statement, where we say that we are going to be the leader in education through innovation, while focusing on the whole child. So, just clarification on that, uh, just to bring us back to our strategic agenda.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Cartwright, I'd also like to weigh in on this one. Mrs. Garner asked some minutes ago about what are we trying to sell? There's a, a term that I learned, or maybe was reinforced for me, uh, when I was part of the Wisconsin Association of School Boards Group, that recently attended an equity conference in Washington DC, and on a national level, there was a good deal of discussion about what was called the Homework Gap. The Homework Gap is being, um, defined as the lack of opportunity for some students to access the internet from home, or being able to, to do their homework. And so, providing bus transportation to places where they can access, uh, the internet, uh, would be, be a big advantage. I don't know if we can track rate point averages, or if that's even a positive way to do that, or, uh, look at the number of horses that are passed, as compared to what they were in the past, but there, there would be some data that could be gathered, I'm not sure what that would be. Uh, like Mr. Peschel, I'd like to commend all the people who have worked on this most recently. This is a, an undertaking that's gone on for at least, I think, three years. We've heard from Deb Martin, who was here earlier and had to leave with a couple of her colleagues. The Esther Group, which is a faith-based group that promotes social justice and equity, and we've certainly heard from students. I recently came across an email this week of a student who had written to me in twenty eighteen and asked that we provide transportation. So this has been an ongoing situation. We also have groups, as Mr. Peschel alluded to, who have contributed to, uh, bussing of students, uh, up to this point. Uh, there was just an article, I believe, in the Herald, the Oshkosh Herald, this week, which noted that Altrusa International of Oshkosh had held a fundraiser in, I think it was February, it was called Eighty Bytes, Eighty Bytes Around the World. And they had, uh, indicated in there that one of the, the beneficiaries of their fundraising would be after-school, or bussing for, for students. So, we know the Boys and Girls Club have been involved in this, lots of entities have been involved. And I'm just very pleased that we're at a point where we can do this, and that the, there's been the alignment of the city, and this, uh, independent source of money to benefit our students, as Dr. Cartwright noted. This is part of our mission statement, vision statement, and also our mantra of students first. And, uh, I just see many benefits, as all three of our speakers pointed out tonight, gave us new perspectives perhaps, or reinforced perspectives on the benefits, um, of this program, so, I'm, um, I'm very pleased to see this in order to benefit the students of this district. Any other comments or questions on this? Okay, Mrs. Homestead, I believe you wanted to...
Sure, yep.
Take another step here.
Yep, um, I move to amend the motion by changing the thirty, the thirty thousand dollar commitment to thirty-three five, thirty-three thousand five hundred per year for two years, in the agreement.
So moved, second?
Am I doing that wrong?
Wait a minute, she moved that one.
Yours is a second.
I'll be a second.
Okay. All right, it's been moved and seconded, um, to amend Resolution Number Ten, is there any further discussion on that resol, on the amendment? All right, then I guess we can call the roll.
On the amendment.
On the amendment.
Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye, Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olmstead?
Aye.
Olmstead, aye. Peschel?
Aye.
Peschel, aye. Solaji?
Aye.
Solaji, aye. Carlin? Amendment carried.
Very good, and then we go to the resolution?
As amended, yep.
As amended. All right, uh, do we need to read that, or are you ready to go?
Over discussion.
Okay, any more, thank you, any more discussion, and the resolution as amended. All right, please call the roll.
Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olmstead?
Aye.
Olmstead, aye. Peschel?
Aye.
Peschel, aye. Solaji?
Aye.
Solaji, aye. Carlin? Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Motion carried.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the board, and everyone who has worked to make this possible, to benefit our students. Another example of us moving forward as a district. All right then, Resolution Number Eleven, be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the Facility Advisory Committee Consolidation Plan, previously known as Pathway B, as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved?
Second?
Discussion.
And then we've discussed it a lot, man. We've discussed that a whole lot.
Just out.
I think I know that plan by heart by now.
I'm just excited, it's, I do know it by heart, but I found myself today, I got, got to the slideshow on our presentation that showed Pathway B, the north side, Pathway B, the west side, and I took a screenshot of them, so that when I'm in the grocery store and wherever else I've been...
Yeah, I don't know it by heart that well, I would double check for I would say so, yeah.
And people ask me, well, I know it by heart enough to show, but I just think people, once they see it, right, I can tell them, but they see it, and it makes sense. So I just encourage everyone to see that, find those slides, yeah, Pathway B.
Yes, go look at it, yeah.
It's, um, it, it reinforces for me, when I hear Mrs. Olmstead and Mrs. Carlin in particular, talk about going to other school districts and seeing the facilities that are, that are available to students in other districts, and thinking about, one of the comments that was made, at, at one of our recent sessions, where the comment, the essence of the con, the comment was that curriculum should drive facilities, not the other way around, but in our district, it seems to be that facilities drive curriculum.
They do.
That is, we are limited in what we can provide students as far as learning opportunities, because of some of the facilities we have. And, um, I, I think our children deserve better than that, and as we're preparing students to say college, career, and community-ready. We think about the students in our schools right now, who are going to be living and working in the twenty thirties, forties, fifties, and beyond. We need facilities that will prepare them to be college, career, community-ready, and I've heard Governor Evers say civic-ready as well, so I'm very excited about the possibility of providing more opportunities, more learning opportunities for our students, and opportunities that will allow them to develop the problem-solving skills and the other skills that we've heard from Dr. Gunlock and others are going to be needed, uh, in the next fifty years, so, um, I think this is a good, good decision.
Mr. Peschel?
Sure, thank you. First and foremost, this is a civics lesson, right? So this is, um, it's an opportunity for our community to come out and show support, or not for an idea that, um, we feel is worth asking the community about, and I think that's, that's really important, is that, um, this is an idea that not just the board here has worked on, but staff and community members, uh, broader community members who have come together to put in their time and effort and their ideas, to say, we're excited about being, being able to put out a proposal like this. This proposal is really important to me as a lifelong resident of Oshkosh, and as a product of the Oshkosh Area School District, because I, I remember the schools that I, that I, that I went to school in here, and I re, and I, and they're not extremely different than what they were now than they were then.
I'm gonna interrupt you real quick, Bob.
Sure.
Because I went to the museum this weekend, and they have the past and the then and now, Merrill Middle School's on there. I took a picture, and nothing's changed. And I was like, all of these are great, but you've got this one, that just goes really piggyback what you just said of, not, much has changed between then and now, and if you go to the museum, it's a beautiful, beautiful display, but it has that there, you're right, yeah.
And I, and I think it's really important that, that our community has the conversation about what we expect out of our facilities, and the children that we, that we want them, the children that we expect to educate in, and the staff that we expect to educate the children. The idea that place, pride of place, has such a large impact on one's understanding, one's willingness to learn. And that's what I'm, that's, that's, that's where we're at, we're at this point in the history of Oshkosh where we need to have this discussion, and this discussion is this referendum, cause this can put us on a path that is so much better than what, than what I think we've ever imagined. And I, I was gonna stop short of saying this, I, in some regards, I feel that what we're doing now doesn't go far enough. I feel it's that important, and I'm a neighborhood schools guy. I, I absolutely love the idea of neighborhood schools, walkable schools, uh, you know, just, but we're at this point that we have to, we have to say, are, are we ready? Are we ready to move forward with a plan that can reshape how we educate our children in Oshkosh? And I think that's what, I think this plan does that. And so I'm not making a pitch for everyone to go out and vote for it, because that's the community's decision to do that. But I'm, I'm really comfortable, as a neighborhood schools guy, pushing forward the idea that our community should have the ability to vote on this proposal, even though there's a side of me that really struggles with the consolidation effort of this, but I know that the greater outcome is that if we can do something like this, we're gonna enhance the lives of, of students. So, so I'm very comfortable, because it's a civics lesson. It allows our community to engage, and to talk, and to decide future paths. So, and it's that, it's that important, it is a future path for education in, in the Oshkosh Area School District. So, that's all I gotta say, thank you.
Does anyone else wish, wish to speak on this resolution? Please call the roll.
Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olmstead?
Aye.
Olmstead, aye. Peschel?
Aye.
Peschel, aye. Solaji?
Aye.
Solaji, aye. Carlin? Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Motion carried.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Just so excited.
Facilities Advisory Committee, the administration, and everyone will provide an input into this process. Uh, next agenda item is request for future agenda items, does anyone wish to place anything on a future agenda? Are there any announcements?
Yeah.
Tonight?
Ooh. Jim!
As, uh, as you may or may not know, March is considered Youth Art Month, and on the first Saturday of the month, as you may or may not know, there is a gallery walk that's held in downtown Oshkosh, and at Art Space Collective, there's gonna be artworks from the district, from kindergarten all the way up to high school, on display at Art Space, and then at the New Moon, there's gonna be, Merrill Art Students are gonna have a little show at the, at the New Moon.
It starts at six, right?
It goes from six to nine, on March seventh, I believe.
Yes.
All right, very good, are there any other announcements?
I have one more.
Yes, sir.
I gave every one of you a card for the state of the city, the city address, uh, and so every one of you and everyone out there is, uh, invited to come to the convention center, uh, six to nine, I believe it is, on March ninth, Monday.
Right after we celebrate Oshkosh.
Yes, yep.
Very good, any other announcements? Well, Dr. Cartwright had noted earlier that this is Public Schools Week, and our Governor Tony Evers signed a proclamation, um, designating February twenty-fourth to twenty-eighth as we love our Public Schools Week, so in, in view of that, I wanna thank all of the staff members of the Oshkosh Area School District for what you do each and every day to make positive differences in the lives of our children. And, and what our current staff have done is to build on the work of previous staff members, so we thank the retirees and those who contributed, but maybe left before retirement, and we thank all of you, because it takes a village to educate a child, and we are so proud of our schools and the positive things that take place each and every day, so thank all of you for what you do for our children. With that, then we can adjourn to executive session, executive session, uh, has two parts tonight, one is deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whether competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session under Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight-five, per N one, per N E, a purchase of property, and two, considering the employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, under Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight-five, per N one, per N C, a administrator contracts.
So moved?
Second?
Please call the roll.
Olmstead?
Aye.
Olmstead, aye. Peschel?
Aye.
Peschel, aye. Solaji?
Aye.
Solaji, aye. Carlin? Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
All right.